We have a tremendous number of speakers on 3-6 who have waited patiently. If it's without objection, I told these folks I would attempt to move this forward. We had to get through the housekeeping before we lost our quorum, but we're here now. Same thing applies. We're all, we all know what we're talking about here. This is the Perdido Key Beach access issue. If you are in support, we would encourage you to wave in support. If you are opposed, obviously you'll have your one minute. But anyhow, we got about 40 speakers, so we're just going to rock and roll it and we're going to get it rolling. First speaker this evening is Alan Dennis, and you will have one minute. Excuse me, I cannot hear you.
Do I have a speaker for him somewhere in this stack?
Okay, you can go ahead and come forward, Mr. Wimmer. And yeah, you'll find it. And you'll have two minutes.
Kent Wimmer, Defenders of Wildlife.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Sounds like people are saying that there were a number of people who also gave their time to Kent.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, we...
Is that not the case?
If it is, if it is, we will... Hold on one second, we'll sort this out. I apologize. We just have a tremendous number and...
I'm here at your pleasure.
Okay, Kent Wimmer, Alan Dennis, who else gave you time? Who else? And your name? Quigley? Is Quigley in there?
I thought I had him together.
That's fine. Okay, so anyone else giving time? Your name, sir?
Alan McDuff.
Alan McDuff. Do we have McDuff?
I don't think I'm going to go that long.
Quigley and McDuff?
There's two separate stacks.
Yeah, Quigley.
Tell them I'm sorry.
It's okay. No, 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 you're good. McDuff. Perfect, okay, we got it. So what is that? One, two, three, four, five. So you have five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, and I promise I won't go five minutes. Kent Wimmer, Defenders of Wildlife, I'm the senior representative for Defenders of Wildlife. Defenders has been active in protecting habitat for the Perdido Key Beach Mouse for several years. As you might remember, we were instrumental in finally resolving the Habitat Conservation Plan and getting that passed after we were able to settle our lawsuit friendly, in a friendly manner. Defenders believes that this current, that the current proposals are not consistent with the purpose for which this endangered species grant that funded most of the acquisition to preserve this critical habitat for the Perdido Key Beach Mouse. The county has not even yet developed with, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has not approved, the management plan for this site when, when the grant was initially settled over six years ago. It was probably longer than that, but by this point, you know, the, it required the county to develop a management plan, and that has never even been accomplished yet. Both, we believe both the development proposals negatively impact at the current level of scope and intensity, they negatively impact critical habitat for the Perdido Key Beach Mouse, and the habitat, they, they both affect the beach mouse directly and the habitat that they rely on. We also believe both development proposals would trigger U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service review for consistency with the HCP, and Defenders of Wildlife would continue to impose this level of intensity of development on this site. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service letter of September lays out a number of specific concerns that they have, and Defenders of Wildlife shares those concerns. You know, we recommend that the county consider an acquisition of more suitable beach, a public beach access site within the master plan area that the county has already adopted. And it's a good master plan. We also feel if, if you can reallocate the development intensity, the, the, the beach access from that site to another site and restore this entire sundowner property, that those credits that you're going to be obtaining from restoring additional habitat, even more than what's there, you'll be able to apply that elsewhere for enhanced development elsewhere on the key. So please, by developing a more suitable site, by, by developing a more suitable site elsewhere, you know, especially within the master plan area, you know, you can provide more public access for a more efficient number of dollars and get the public what they want where they actually need it. So on behalf of Defenders of Wildlife, we appreciate you considering our comments and concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me ask you a question since you're here.
Yes, sir.
And you've got a minute left of your time.
I do.
No, that's okay. Could, could we not do both? Could we not do both?
I, I think you could provide some access, you know, pedestrian access, you're building, you have the trail right there, you know, provide a pedestrian access. I'm just saying, you know, don't use any more of the site that's already there. Take the site that you have. It's already set aside for beach mouse.
Yes, sir.
Beach mouse. Focus and do intensive beach mouse restoration there, and if you want to create a pedestrian walkway down there from the trail, you know, that's, that's, that's fine. I mean, that, that was, I think that was contemplated, but...
Thank you.
Having a bunch of parking spots, different story.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Commissioner Robinson, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I'm a little confused. I mean, Fish and Wildlife was a part of the original grant of how we, how we acquired the property. I mean, I don't think there was, there was anything that was unclear when they offered us a grant for both habitat conservation and, and public use. I mean, I don't, I don't think they were confused at that point. I mean, is that something you think that, that they didn't understand?
No, I, I think they understood. I think it's the level and the amount of impact on site for the level, the, the level of public access that's being proposed, I think it's going...
We don't even know what the...
Beyond what, what they probably would have contemplated, and that's why they were recommending a management plan be developed right after the site was, was acquired, so everybody would be on the same page.
Do you know what level is being proposed? Because I don't even, we haven't even, we were talking today whether we would even be able to give money to begin to look at it, so I don't, I don't even know what is being, what's being proposed as far as what's there. So I mean, I mean, that's a little confusing because we haven't even started the process to begin to ask what, what was going to be the development.
Those proposals are in your backup.
Yeah, it was proposal 1A and proposal 1B, both, both indicated...
But this board is neither taking, this board is not taking any action on either one of those.
That's what, that's why we're here tonight, to even look at it.
And what I'm suggesting, at that level intensity, it seems you would be better, I, I would recommend you look elsewhere to develop a more intensive public access site and use this site for the beach mouse that your habitat, you, that was acquired for, and then even reclaim, restore the pieces that are already impacted that have the parking area, and then you can transfer that, that, that credits essentially elsewhere. You'll have, be able to develop property elsewhere at higher intensity, or destroy more beach mouse habitat elsewhere if, by restoring the habitat there.
Commissioner Underhill, you're recognized.
Thank you. I need to speak directly to Commissioner Robinson's statement with regard to what that real, that real partnership, an actual partnership was at the time that this was initiated. Much time has been passed, so certainly, and you know, certainly many, many things going on. We spend a lot more time on traffic circles and those kind of things over in your district that you might not be aware of this, or it might have fallen through the sands of time. But I think it's very important to read what U.S. Fish and Wildlife wrote in that September 18th letter that is a fact that has not been talked about since this started coming up. This parcel ended up being our number three, and you can read along with this, it's in your backup. It ended up being our number three choice for Perdido Key Beach Mouse Conservation Acquisition due to the large dune feature on the north side. This is the part that's important. The public beach access feature was added after this beachfront parcel was selected. Okay, so at that time, and that may not have been presented to you guys at that time, Fish and Wildlife looked at this and selected this parcel based on the Perdido Key Beach Access, or Beach Mouse part. The access part was something that was added later on. Our Fish and Wildlife partner was reluctantly supportive of it. The next sentence indicates that. However, any public use of this parcel would have to be consistent with the original intent of the grant, which is Perdido Key Beach Mouse Conservation. So it's important that we recognize as we think about the past, that we actually review the documentation that tells us what was actual and factual during that time. I recognize that this board was sold by my predecessor, the idea that you could do both fairly, and get a lot out of both of them. The reality is, I think, and what I have been saying all along, and I think what Mr. Wimmer is also indicating is, by the time you meet the things that are consistent with the original intent of this grant, you end up with such a small area that your time and energy would be better spent anywhere, elsewhere, and you lose the value of the mitigation, 0.8 acres of mitigation land, which we'll talk about, I think, a little bit later on.
Thank you, Mr. Wimmer. Next up...
Thank you very much.
Rebecca Purnell, and two people are given, actually Mae Dean, Mae Dean? Okay. And Rebecca Purnell is given time, as is Guy Yaste?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay, all right, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak to the beach access. We have worked for many years to create a plan to develop Perdido Key and increase a desirable beach access. I do not believe investing in the Crab Trap property is the best use of our limited funds. As Commissioner Robinson stated a few meetings ago, this is a political move to attack Commissioner Underhill in an election year. Many of the access four group are in favor, excuse me?
Well, please, please, please continue. Please continue.
Please. Many of the access four group are in favor of four-laning Perdido Key Drive, which would prevent the building of a multi-use path and asphalt from telephone pole to telephone pole. They were also in favor of lifting the dwelling cap, which would double or triple the number of residents on Perdido Key. And they were also in favor of the bingo facility. They have been against the wishes of the majority of the residents for many years. The residents of Perdido Key have had so many battles to better Perdido Key. We have miles of public access beach and limited funds to develop a desirable county access. We hope you will respect our limited funds and sensitive environment, and we are trying to preserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Diane Crummel, and she will have time from Marilyn Brown.
And I have, since I, the video I'd like to show is five minutes, 23 seconds, and I have another person that's giving me their minutes.
Okay, so you'll have exactly five.
So, Larry, Kevin?
So...
Let's get it going fast.
Five minutes?
And basically, I just want to show the video.
She's got four here.
I'm here to, our team's at Pensacola Beach and open beach access number four.
But don't start until...
We're working together to support each other. We basically believe that public plans belong to the public, so...
Okay, so you're playing a video, okay, can we get volume, or how does this work?
It better have volume.
David was going to put up volume.
Let's see.
Casey, you got volume?
Hang on. I don't hear any volume.
Volume's down there, he's not going to have volume.
Oops.
Casey, can you help him with the volume?
Here, we're going to get the volume here. We'll start your time once the video starts. Because you only got five minutes, the tail end of it's going to get cut off.
I am. There be volume?
He hasn't turned up, so I think it needs to be turned up on here.
So just put the mic down by the... We got full screen?
It's turned up on here.
Can you just talk it through earlier?
Let's just hit the play and see.
Yeah, he tested it earlier, and it worked, so...
Not hearing anything. We got a technical glitch going on. You guys tested this earlier?
He did, yes, sir.
What happened?
David, turn it up.
Can, can we maybe get some more people while we figure out...
Yeah, what, yeah. Okay, you guys...
We can come back and take that one.
Yeah, we'll take this one in a minute. We'll get the, we'll get the gremlins worked out. We'll come back to you guys. Okay, so you'll have your five minutes. So just minimize that. Casey, I don't know if you can do anything while we continue, because we've got to keep this train rolling. Eight people are giving time to Melissa Pino, Leslie Cole, James Scaminacci, Marie Scopus, Scopus, Angie DeMint, Ann Robertson, Kevin Wade, saw him, he's here, Mike Pino, and Melissa Pino. Okay, so we've got eight, and you'll have eight minutes. You're recognized. Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. Melissa Pino, 4013 Southeast Boblitz. The first thing I need to do tonight is issue a retraction from something I said in the last meeting. I get accused of being a liar a lot publicly. I'm not a liar, although I think I graduated to psycho this week, right, Commissioner Underhill? Psycho, malpino. I do make mistakes, though, and I did make a mistake last time when I talked about the failed beach acquisition. Doctor, and I, and I still don't know whether he's Marable or Mirabelle, whatever he prefers, was not involved in that transaction. So I apologize for making that mistake. I guess that's why you were laughing. It's not humorous that we lost out on that beach acquisition because you only came in at $850,000, and still nobody really knows why that is. I should have known that Dr. Marable was not involved in that transaction, because if we, if he were, we'd probably be out on that beach right now. So I want to look at this at the context of, we've got the failed acquisition because the number was too low, and somebody snapped it up. Don't know why the number was that low. Now we've got beach access four that he has been blocking for four years. And then lo and behold, this week, we found out he's got plans to close beach access one. And we have it in writing, and there's video, the video is up online. At a Perdido Key Association meeting, he distributed language on the Perdido Key public access. One of the biggest challenges to our property rights is the conflicts that occur with the day visitors. The solution is to build a larger public access and close down beach access one. The goal of the second of my restore projects is to build a single location for the day visitors where we can have enough density to warrant a lifeguard stand, policing, et cetera. And then in the video, that again is posted on Facebook, it's had a lot of views already, he says the following when he stands in front of the Perdido Key Association. "We cannot afford for there to be a conflict between the property owner and the day visitor." This is what this is about. Okay, beach access number one is an absolute flashpoint for that, and this is the first time I'm saying that publicly. Beach access number one needs to be closed. There is no smart way to do a dumb thing. There's no way to make beach access number one work. With all those three condos, with all of them having use of that beach, that access, there's no way to make it work that doesn't cause conflict. Beach access number one needs to be closed. So we don't want any conflict for the condo owners that want private use of our public beaches. Please think about this context for a second. I mean, is anyone not seeing the pattern here? This is what this is about. As to what Mr. Wimmer with the Defenders of Wildlife, and I want to say that I really do respect the work of that group. They, they do a lot of good. But I find it strange that its talking points were so aligned with Commissioner Underhill's. I mean, if it were in print, I would have thought it was Commissioner Underhill saying it. Maybe that's why you couldn't get anybody from Fish and Wildlife here, even though they were in town this week. And I do understand that, you know, the woman, the local person, is suffering in Panama City, so she couldn't make that, but there were state, there were state agents of U.S. Fish and Wildlife here in town this week, and they're not here. And yet we keep hearing about the urgency with which Fish and Wildlife views mitigation on this project, and I am so glad to finally hear you say that number, eight tenths of an acre of mitigation. So we're going to give up this entire thing for eight tenths of an acre, and I'm hoping that Timothy Day, who is so patient in trying to explain all this stuff to me, will speak to it a little bit better than I probably can, but the basics of it are, we could do four tenths with county permits on that mitigation, but the other half of it is going to require a $40,000 one-time fee to get the eight tenths of an acre. And I know there's a lot more that goes into it, and I'm hoping that Tim will inform the board of this, because you guys don't need to get informed of this stuff by Commissioner Underhill. You have the expert here in Tim Day. And Tim's been doing great work. I want to speak to some of the challenges in his plan, and it's no criticism of Tim. I get a little worried when I see these challenges. First challenge is that it's outside of the preferred area for the public access in the Perdido Key Master Plan. It's a planning document, doesn't have any legal teeth. The second is the Escambia County Board of Adjustment's conditional use approval required. I could be wrong about this, I certainly could, but it seemed that we weren't saying it was a requirement, but it's just a really good idea. And in the meantime, I already presented the zoning that would allow for the, for the project to move forward without that conditional use. It would give us the time to get it before the Board of Adjustment. U.S. Fish and Wildlife concerns. Commissioner Underhill, your cherry picking of this email is just ridiculous. Nowhere in this email did they even go so far as to recommend not using this property over everything else. She clearly says, "The agreement for this specific parcel indicated a public beach access could be developed." She goes on to say, "Any public use of this parcel would have to be consistent with the original intent of the grant." Okay, seems pretty clear. And then she goes on to recommend which of the two plans for the beach access she actually does prefer. This is the only time she mentions a preference, is which plan to open it up. She says, the one she chooses, "This is preferred over the two provided options if complete conservation is not on the table." Listen to that conditional, "if complete conservation is not on the table." This option could also explore a lateral dune walkover to the existing one if options to use and improve the sundown walkover are explored. Does any, does anyone think that this is like the strum and drang, thunderous, scary stuff that Commissioner Underhill was representing? It was this morning. It seems like a very reasonable email written by someone who's just asking that the county explore all of the options. The next, the next challenge was access for emergency management reduces area available for parking. Okay, we can still pull upwards of 30. Design and construction funding, what, I think what's gotten missing from this conversation is, Tim has pointed out over and over that once we get the initial cost for the design, there's all kinds of grants available for this, and he's very adept at, at getting these types of things. And finally, the neighboring citizen concerns. Really? It's a challenge that Commissioner Underhill prefers condo owners using the beaches to the residents of Escambia County? Let's move this thing forward tonight, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Margaret Hostetter?
Mr. Chairman, I have some comments that must be made here.
Commissioner Underhill.
To say that nowhere in this email does Fish and Wildlife make a recommendation is patently untrue. The very first line of the second page of that email, it's in your backups, and you can read along if you wish, after Fish and Wildlife says that they have concerns about the other, about the idea of building this out, she says, she being Christie from Fish and Wildlife, "Does the county own or can they acquire any other parcels adjacent to the other three beach accesses that would be less sensitive? We would be interested in discussing an option to transfer the development footprint on the sundown parcel to that of less sensitive land, thus not triggering the HCP permit requirements." Now, Ms. Pino likes to talk about 0.8 acres of critical beach mouse habitat mitigation as just being eight tenths of an acre, as though that is a small amount. That is a priceless asset in an environment, a very difficult building environment that Perdido Key is. Eight tenths of an acre of mitigation land for critical beach habitat would be a, the hottest of available commodities if that was something that was on the private sector market. Any builder, any developer would jump over themselves to get that. We have that. So do not allow yourself to be convinced and poo-poo the idea that eight tenths of an acre of critical habitat on that island is anything other than as good as Midas's gold itself. It is interesting that Ms. Pino brought up how very similar my lines, my lines of thought and the comments that you hear out of me are to Mr. Wimmers from, from Defenders of Wildlife. She almost seemed to be implying that somehow he'd gotten those comments from me. Perhaps I'm wrong about what she may have been implying, but I will tell you why there is such a similarity there. I ran on a platform four years ago of doing away with the conflicts that had so long been the case on that island, and in doing so, in order to get there, one of the things that I did as a Republican running for office, sat down with an environmental group, not throwing darts at one another, but actually sitting and talking as adults and working out what our various equities would be. I have been a long and strong supporter of the Habitat Conservation Plan, the Habitat Conservation Plan that came into place in part because of Kent Wimmer's organization. So it is interesting, and I remember when the Gulf War was going on, people would say, well, I respect the troops, but not the war. Those of us that were fighting it always found that to be difficult, because you can't say that you respect the man's work when in fact this is one of the, the, you know, crown jewel in Defenders of Wildlife's work, and this effort to do what was being talked about, or Option A is on our agenda tonight, would in fact be a direct assault on the work of Defenders of Wildlife on Perdido Key. And I'm sure I'll have a comment, opportunity to get to the other comments.
Thank you.
Margaret Hostetter?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We, sorry, we do have the video ready whenever you are.
Okay, well, you want to hear, we'll hear from her, and then we'll go right to the video. So Margaret, you'll be recognized, you'll have one minute, and then the video folks, just be ready. Or play your video, you'll have five minutes.
Margaret Hostetter, 320 East Sunset Avenue. I am here to support developing, having a parking area so that people, public, can use what we've purchased. I do appreciate, and want to raise another issue on this Perdido, point was made by the lady, lady previous, about people wanting to lift the dwelling cap on Perdido Key. I think the dwelling cap is about 7,150 dwelling units, is that correct? All right. But according to your zoning and what would be allowed if the individual property owners are given their right to develop as zoned and density allowed, that would, that would involve a larger amount, right? A significantly larger amount. So this is another example of planning.
Okay.
We need to address that discrepancy, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, ladies, you'll have your five minutes, and then the video starts.
So Diane, Kevin, and I, we're all just very careful not to disturb any federal preservation. No dunes were trampled in the making of this video. We did what you have to do, which is go through a private property, which is the Crab Trap, and the Crab Trap allows the public to use the beach space that they lease. So think about that for a minute. We've got a restaurant that's gracious enough to let the public use their beach, the public beach access. Now, this is off-season, Diane, so usually it would be a lot busier out there.
Really packed. But you can see over here, there's hardly anybody here, so during season, they've got them all marked off and parked off, where people can't come out here and be on their private beach.
So all of this area right here, where no one's really hanging out, except the one gentleman that we saw come down the private access to the sundown, I don't know if he actually lives at the sundown, because they pulled up in a truck and parked the truck in front of the beach access, but he obviously knows he can use it. So we've down there right now, we're not really clear on whether we can be on that beach or not, Diane. Do you think we can be on it, Kevin?
I, I think we can be on, I believe it's already been stated that the public can be on this beach. You just have to be able to walk to get there.
There you go.
So ADA people, anybody that needs assistance, find some friends, maybe they can carry you down. I'm not sure how far you're supposed to go. My, my guess is, as long as you're not getting drugged by a cooler or drugged on top of a cooler, it's okay.
Kevin makes a good point, Diane, because the, the parameters of this grant, in order for it to get fulfilled properly, it's supposed to be completely ADA compliant.
it to get fulfilled properly, it's supposed to be completely ADA compliant. The walkover and the restroom facilities and the parking facilities need to be ADA compliant.
Absolutely.
But Doug Underhill stands out on this beach, and he says, "I don't understand what the problem is. Anyone can use this beach, you just got to be able to walk over there."
Wow, isn't that the truth? Who wants to log all their stuff and go sit on it in front of a private beach? You've got the Crab Trap willing and already opening the beach access to this public beach. It's a no-brainer for us. The citizens of Escambia County deserve to have this beach access.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
And there are restore projects that were specifically about universal ADA access to places like this beach and to the other beaches as well. And there's talks of mitigating this and tossing it away, letting another, the condos go ahead and purchase just the section of the beach and using this other parts of the area as mitigation.
You know, speaking of ADA, if you go down into Johnson's Beach, the National Park, look how difficult it is to get on the beach here. You know, their beach accesses there are just in disrepair. An ADA compliant, they don't even come to close. So, you know, everyone is public here in Escambia County, in our country. We all deserve access to what belongs to us. I just can't understand why Doug Underhill, you know, has held on to this and not made it known to all the town committees. It just makes no sense.
So you're telling me that the accesses that were at Johnson's Beach that were torn up recently haven't been repaired yet?
Do you know, I went over there earlier this year, when I first was on, came out here to look out here, if you go over there, Barry went with me and went and looked. I have never seen such disrespected, disgraceful, you know, beach access for the ADA, let alone us. A lot of it was torn up. So if you go out there now, I'm sure it's torn up, trust me. It was torn up before the hurricane. They've got nothing to repair those.
And Diane, that's why it's been so important, our core group of people who want this beach access open, to insist on, actually, if we can, going beyond the federal guidelines on ADA. And we're working with Sherri Myers and some other people at the Center for Independent Living, and Sherri was kind enough to come down and give her support to this project. And I have been assured by Tim Day that his plans on getting this beach access open will include working with the new director of the Universal Access Restore Grant, which they're looking at hiring a director for that position right now. And Sherri would like to see this be the gem of ADA accessibility in our area, and I think that would be such a great thing.
I mean, look at it, it's so beautiful. You look at it over there with all the sea oaks and stuff, but what's going to happen is, what I envision happening is, it's just going to be a walkover, so that protects the beach mouse, and yet it serves the public needs.
Stop it, babe. We get the flavor, we're going to stop it. All right, next speaker this evening, Scott Trotter.
Scott Trotter, 300 Jameson Street. And I just want to talk very briefly about the relationship between the Perdido Key Master Plan and beach access, because we've been told repeatedly over the last seven months or so that the Perdido Key Master Plan requires a beach access being the commercial core, but that's actually not what it says. It says that ideally, beach access should be connected to the town center, which we don't even know for sure where that's going to be yet. But we have learned recently that Joe Morablie is planning on building the town center on the north side of Johnson Beach Road, which doesn't have beach access. It doesn't have a Gulf front property. So that means you're going to have to get in your car and drive between the town center and the beach access, regardless if it's on the east side or west side of the state park. So if you're going to have to drive, it seems to me it makes more sense financially to go ahead and build up what we have, rather than spend millions of dollars on an additional beach access on the east side of State Park. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Tom Skerritt, 16401 Perdido Key Drive. And I just want to very quickly remind the Commission that when the county accepted the federal grant money to buy this Perdido Key beach mouse habitat, the county pledged to develop, in coordination with the Fish and Wildlife Service, a management plan for that area. And the Fish and Wildlife Service offered their technical assistance to develop that plan. I would just suggest that perhaps the county's first step in deciding how to responsibly develop this property might be to take advantage of that Fish and Wildlife offer and get them to offer the expertise to develop a management plan. Then you don't have to guess what Fish and Wildlife might approve. You get the chance to use their expertise, develop the plan that you promised to develop. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Let's see here, three people given time to Wilson Robertson, Vernon Kelly, Norman Jeter, Del Greatwood. Is there a Del Greatwood in the house? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Del Greatwood, and then Wilson, so you'll have four minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. I didn't plan to speak. I say that every time I come, and it's true, I don't really plan to. But first, I didn't know about Jack leaving, and if I lose my time and don't get everything I won't say it, I'm still going to say this. Jack's such a gentleman. He knew when he came here and interviewed, I supported moving up an assistant administrator to administrator. Then when that didn't happen, we unanimously voted for Jack. He has never held that against me one bit. You'd have thought I supported him vehemently, just like Grover did. And Grover knew him, I didn't. Best administrator we could ever have. We're going to miss you, Jack. Great man. In fact, if I hadn't liked you and wanted to work with you, Ann would have killed me because she'd been to some of the meetings around, at some of the conferences, and she said, "That is the nicest, best gentleman I ever met in my life." So Jack, great job, we're going to miss you. I just want to say a couple of things. I don't appreciate the fact that the Commissioner of District Two would insult me, because I made the motion to buy this property, and he sure insulted the rest of you that were sitting there. When he said his predecessor snookered you into buying that property, that's pretty insulting to me. I don't even like it, and I'm gone. I certainly wouldn't like it if I was sitting there. You're not dumb enough to be snookered. You go look at the minutes. When we voted to buy that property, it was clearly, I read the minutes here a few months ago, I didn't bring them with me this time, but it's stated in there, "For public access and beach habitat conservation." And the gentleman that spoke in favor of protecting the habitat, I totally agree with him. He said you could build a walkover. Nobody's ever suggested going in there with a bulldozer and tearing down the dunes and destroying the property. It's always been a walkover. If you can enjoy that beach when you get down there, let's give people some access to it. And the small amount of frontage that would be used for paving is all you've got to really disturb. So it's going to be, I assume, beach access, and I assume it's going to be public. I hope you vote that way. The other thing I heard at the last meeting, that Commissioner of that district said to you board members, "Well, the reason we hadn't developed it, you never brought a plan." Well, wouldn't you, as the Commissioner of that district, brought a plan? He's had four years. If I'd inherited or got elected to that office and inherited a beautiful piece of property in my district, I'd have developed it, in fact, I hope I would have developed it so nice that you might have named it after me. That could have happened. That could have been a jewel out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the Speaker, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Underhill, thank you, thank you.
I have a question for the Speaker.
If we're going to say that, I mean, that it was always planned to be that, is Ms. Yancees from Fish and Wildlife, is she mistaken, or is she, has something changed where she says that the public beach access feature was added after the fact?
Well, go look at the minutes. Look at the minutes. Larry Downs mentioned the warranty deed said it was in there. I hadn't read the warranty deed. Look at the minutes that I read a few months ago and see if it don't clearly state the two uses.
Mr. Robinson, I didn't offer you more time to speak. I asked you a direct question.
All right, ask it again, I missed it.
That's fine, okay. All right, all right, all right.
I'm sorry, I was walking up here, I missed the question. Ask it for me.
All right. Is Fish and Wildlife incorrect in saying that the public beach access feature was added after this beach parcel had been selected for beach mouse habitat?
I'm not saying she's right or wrong. I don't know what she stated, but I can tell you what the minutes said.
I just told you what she stated. But I know what the minutes state, because you've already said that over and over again. My point is that what was said and what was told to the members of this board, and I didn't imply that they're fools to be snookered, I'm implying that often, I didn't imply, I'm stating very clearly, that it is quite often that people tell this board things that turn out not to be accurate. That's why we don't have a $6 million OLF-8. That's why we do not have, why we end up in deals, like having a jail that we don't actually, aren't actually able to manage cheaper. And you know quite well that that happens up here quite often. So the information that was presented at the time that this was purchased was not exactly what Fish and Wildlife was saying at the time. And they've made it very clear in this email that that's the case. Now, it's easy for you to stand there and say what you would have done had you been in my shoes, but perhaps I would be able to say the same thing about what I might have done in District One had I been there. Now, you say, "Never had a plan, never had a plan," and you keep articulating that idea of never had a plan. It's what you want to do every time you come up here, saying that you're not going to talk again, but you need to do, every time, telling me that we didn't have a plan. But in fact, we do have a plan, and that plan has always been precisely what we're talking about with Option Two, and precisely what is given to us by Fish and Wildlife as clearly the plan that they would very much like us to go down that road, that is to use this amazing asset that we have as mitigation land so that we can maximize the human development footprint on some other parcel that is in fact better in keeping with the Perdido Key Master Plan. Now, my opponent wants to stand up there and imply that I said one thing when in fact I said something else entirely different. The entire built-up area, the primary core of the island, is a very important part of the entire visit that we have come out here. My plan has been all along, and what I have articulated to you and why I modified the restore project before I brought it to us, and one of my, my second of my restore projects, was to create public beach access anywhere along that core area, okay? There has been a plan. It may not be a plan to your liking, sir, but there has been a plan, and it is the plan that was put forth by the people of Perdido Key and greater Perdido Key area to ensure that we would have public access, not just for the property owners, but we can respect the property owner's rights while also creating public access for the citizens. That is the plan. That has been the plan since I started running for office. It has been the plan that the people of Perdido Key and greater Perdido area have been supportive of.
Mr. Chairman, since he addressed me, can I?
Absolutely, yes.
All I ask you to do is just go look at the records. Every one of you, just like I did, sat there, I sat there two years, y'all sat there another two. So for those four years, we all...
Mr. Chairman, why was the Speaker given more time?
Because he's answering your question, Doug.
No, he's not answering my question, he's telling...
I'm giving him, I'm giving him, I'm giving him a minute to say something.
As you wish, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
My two years sitting there, and you folks have said the same thing. You thought something was going on. I'll just let y'all, you're sitting there, I'm not. He can use his lone political speech on me if he wants to. Y'all are the ones sitting there. Please do the right thing.
Thank you. Next up, okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you. Larry Downs Jr., you will have time from Larry Downs Sr. Are they here? Anyone still here? Alice Downs? All right, they must have left. Okay, final speaker on this item. Seven people are given time to Mr. Randy Cudd, Dorothy Garrett, Nancy Hagman, Michael McCormick, Lily Eubanks, Carl Cooper. Carl Cooper, okay. Rob Wood, Kelly Moore, okay, and Randy Cudd. So we've got a grand total of eight, eight minutes.
So my name is Randy Cudd, 11151 Gulf Beach Highway. The reason the county put the LOST money into buying this property was specific, specifically for the fact that public beach access would be acquired. That answers your question. And you can look on the records, and you can see exactly the negotiation that Gene Valentino and the rest of this board did. The reason they put that LOST money on there was for public beach access. It's on the deed, the warranty deed, and in other locations that I'm going to get to. Now, I've answered that foolish question. I should not have to be here tonight. We should not have to be here tonight. This is what the citizens have to go through.
Please.
Why does it take a massive outcry from the citizens to do what you all have already agreed to do? This board voted five years ago, and Commissioner May, you have said it again and again and again, and I absolutely agree with you, to buy and open the sundown property as a conservation land and public beach access. Underhill says that he had had more information for you guys at the agenda review. He has more information. He's bringing it tonight. I didn't hear any more information. This information has all been in front of you for five years, five years. Ask Tim Day. Tim says it's on the deed. And I've seen it, I got a copy of the deed. I gave you a copy of the deed two meetings back. It says in the Title VI grant that it's for public access. You know how I know that? Because Tim Day wrote the grant. Reason he wrote the grant? LOST funds. Ask and answer. You don't need to talk about it anymore, because there it is. You can go look it up, because obviously you didn't. It says it in the HCP plan. It says that any shoreline county property must have access and parking. Wow. Look it up, it's in the HCP. It says, it even says it in the 2030 comp plan. This property was bought for public access to the beach, and your own laws require you to open it. In truth, I actually thought that I wouldn't be needed here tonight. I believe that we had said everything there was to say and that you knew what you must do, but we are afraid that you will be talked out of it by the flim-flam man from District Two. I listened to him at the agenda review this morning, and he all but told you that the lawsuit threatened will shut down the issuing of permits on Perdido Key, and he might be right. That could happen. If they actually were dumb enough to sue, where a countersuit for frivolous would break their backs, then he's right. But it would last about a year, because once the feds get in and inspect and see that in fact the county does have a management plan, because it's not going forward till you do, that it's going to be tossed. So you might lose permitting for a year. Guess who it impacts? Just take a wild guess who it impacts. It impacts the developers. It impacts his developers. It impacts those people who have got so much money wrapped up in his campaign and his PAC. Pay attention to his left hand, gentlemen, because his right hand has all your attention right now while his left hand is slapping the shit out of us. Excuse that.
Excuse me.
I apologize.
Yeah, that's inappropriate, please.
I apologize. I meant to say something different, but it just came out. We are afraid that he will hoodwink you the way he has hoodwinked us for the last four years. We are concerned that his smooth talking ability, his slick, grandiose mannerisms will fog the truth as he has fogged it for four years. The level of deceit and deception that the citizens have had to deal with from D2 is mind-boggling. This is only one project, there are many. The county really should audit all of his projects, but that's up to you. This room is full tonight, because lots of people care about where we live, we care about our neighbors, we want them to enjoy their beaches, too, because Perdido Key has a long history of being the people's beach. But if Mr. Underway has his way, he'll not only block number four, he'll close number one. He said it, he's admitted it, and I appreciate the fact, appreciate the fact that he's actually coming out. There's a man who wants to take the public beach away. He doesn't want to give us public beach, he wants to take it away. You know, this is really about the haves and the have-nots. I'm speaking for the have-nots. And you know who we are. We live in all of your districts. We work for just above minimum wage. We rent because we cannot own. We work two, sometimes three jobs to raise our children in safe neighborhoods. We want to be able to take our families to the beach, a beach that we can afford. If we don't have a lot of money, the county is the only place we can go. If the county beaches go away, there's a whole segment of your population in each district that is starved from one of our finest assets. We are the have and the have-nots, or as Mr. Underhill refers to us, the cooler draggers, the white trash. Yes, he says that. He actually says that. I don't think he knows, I don't think he knows the history of Johnson's Beach. And Rosamond Johnson, right now, is rolling over in his grave with what he wants to do to that beach out there. We are the citizens from District 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. We are the citizens from District 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. We come in all colors, all ages, and all heritages. Some of us come with broken limbs and wheelchairs, and we want more access to our beach. Y'all should know who you're dealing with by now, because we certainly do. No, gentlemen? I, I don't think we really thought we had to be here tonight till we watched that agenda review this morning. I thought, we thought that y'all knew what to do, and we hope at least four of you do. Apparently, it's three now. But I think it's time for y'all to step up for the people. Step up for the people. The people, the people in Cantonment, Treasure Hill, Warrington, the people that use that beach. The condominium owners have their beach. Let us have ours. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Please, please. Commissioner Robinson, then Commissioner Underhill. Commissioner Robinson, you're recognized.
Well, I was going to say, in the back, I still got to hear your speech, Randy, and I will say, there were times that you had been called to the principal's office after this. If Ms. Young had still been here, you might have had to go to the corner, but, but certainly just in that. But I did want to say, Doug, and I appreciate your comments, what you were saying earlier, but I still say, regardless of what's happening, this is, we did purchase this with the intent of, of public access. I mean, it was very clear...
Okay.
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that we're clapping or anything else. So, to say, we, we bought that for this. I mean, there's no other way to get around here. There's certainly three of us that are still on this board that took a vote, and I mean, it was fully to expect that there. Now, I'm not saying, and I get when we did this, there was no plan, I'm not saying that later on we may have a better access or an opportunity to do something else, when you may want to swap the property. I said this morning, I said, I don't think we should, we should put a dramatic development into this, but I think we should do something at a minimum level to at least open it up to the public. It was promised to them, and it should be delivered to them. I would say right now, on the issue that we were having, we just talked about before, I mean, I think when that, when the access comes forward and somebody's asking for us to vacate waterfront property, we've said no. We've said no, that's not in what we, what we, what we do. We are essentially vacating waterfront property by doing what we're doing now. We clearly, with an intent, told the public this is what we're going to do. Now, I'm not saying that if you find an ability, or these other people here find an ability to somehow find a piece of property that works for the county, you can't find a different thing to do, or the county can't take some other action in the future. But at this time, as of October 18th, 2018, it's, it was designed for the public, and we should be pursuing that way. We voted on it twice to do that. Now, again, I'm not a big fan of things coming right before the election, and I get that, and I understand what's there, but this is something that goes back even before your last election. I mean, this is what the board set in place, and I think if we are to do anything else, we are not standing by the, this is like vacating waterfront property. We are, and I'm not going to vacate waterfront property unless we have some kind of a plan of what's going on. At this point, we don't have a plan. So, I'm not, I'm not, at this point, I said I would not advocate for, for a tremendous build-out, but I think something needs to be done to at least get the basic minimum to allow people to access the property. After that, if we come up with a different plan and something else happens, and future boards make a decision, that's up to future boards, and I, there's nothing I'm going to do here that's going to, going to lock them to do anything, but at this particular time, that is public property, and we have a responsibility to at least get it back open to the public.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Underhill, you're recognized.
Thank you. Grover, you may remember this conversation, or may not, but it was actually the very first conversation that you and I ever had after I got elected, standing in the hallway. Some comments were made about how dirty the election was, that I had just won, and you said, what turned out to be some amazing advice about politics. You said, "Friends may come and friends may go, but enemies accumulate." Grover, enemies do accumulate. There is no question. So, you've had the benefit of sitting here and listening to the same batch of folks, the ones that I said no to with regard to a vacation rental by owner in their community, the one, the chairman or the commissioner who, you know, took up a couple of ethics charges against me, both of which were dropped, none of whom, however, were strong participants in the question of how do we preserve Perdido Key for all? How do we balance the equities of the property owner, the folks who live out in Greater Perdido, and even those who live all the way up in Cantonment, and make sure that this asset is an asset for all of us? And that has been the purpose for everything that we've done. Now, it's funny, it's not funny, it's, it's almost tiring at this point, to listen to Mel take quips out of what I said with regard to preventing conflict. Take the tone out and just listen to the words, or put the tone in that I had when I said it. That is my objective. The Constitution provides for private property rights, and I know that you, particularly as a real estate guy, you get that. Those, we have private property rights on Perdido Key. That does not have to make us enemies of those who do not, and in fact, it puts a stewardship responsibility on us far greater than those who are not property owners on Perdido Key can understand. For example, if somebody leaves something on private beachfront property and causes a false turtle crawl, it's not the person who left that material on there that caused the false crawl that gets fined. Those fines can get into the 30s and 40s of $1,000. Okay? We have a stewardship responsibility and a great burden that comes with the blessing of that ownership. During the Perdido Key Master Plan discussion, the people of Perdido Key and Greater Perdido Key all recognized that what we are trying to achieve out there is to minimize conflict areas. Those of you who have had any experience whatsoever with regard to beach access 1, you recognize that we've already stuffed more into that area than can get onto that, onto that small beach. That is always going, there's no way to make that not a conflict area. The one way that we can certainly preserve access for the citizens we have today, and quite frankly, Chairman, the citizens that are coming to the west side and up in the north section there, the people of the Greater Beulah area are going to want to come to Perdido Key. You're absolutely right about that. Building yet another small access is completely irrational, in that it's not going to provide us a real answer going forward. It's a quick solution in lieu of a longer-term solution. The people of Perdido Key came together four years ago when we created that master plan. Actually, they, they came, I was still deployed when they did it the first time. As you guys well remember, we had to come back and pay for that twice. That Perdido Key Master Plan is not about protecting the rights of the condo owners. Those who want to trade in conflict will tell you that that's what it is, but that's, they're trading in conflict because they don't have the facts on their side. The facts are that the people of Perdido Key...
Please, please.
...recognize that we have an obligation of stewardship, and that obligation includes making sure that that island is accessible to all. So, the, we set out working together and to prevent that conflict, and in fact, there hasn't. The reason you haven't heard a whole lot of conflict out there is precisely because of that. You have not had, to the best of my knowledge, not one of my peers has ever come to me and said, "Hey, Doug," or said on this dais that, you know, we've got, you know, my constituents are getting kicked off of that, off of that island. Precisely the opposite, in fact. Every time that Commissioner May has mentioned the Rosamond Johnson Beach ceremonies, what a great asset it is and how awesome it is that that part of our culture, you know, is part of who we are on Perdido Key. No one's being thrown off at this point. But one of the things that people are complaining about, very much so, and it really is a thorn in the side of Perdidoans and those in the Greater Perdido area who are accustomed to having night access on the beach, is that we don't have night access. In Christie's letter, it specifically says that if you open this thing up, no beach, no night access, none whatsoever, no lighting of any kind. Okay? Those are precisely the kinds of things. Now, you ask, why has this not been talked about? It's noteworthy that in, there's a video that I'm sure has been passed to each of you individually by Mr. Cudd, in which he cut out a whole bunch of things from a conversation, where I said early on, the most that you could get there would be 22 parking spots. I did not pull that out of my ear. I did not pull that out of thin air. That was based on the analysis that is now in front of you as well. You can get, we're up to like 26 parking spots. Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we end the comments from there. I mean, this kind of thing has to, that can't be how we do this.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, we, you know, we, we, we listen to you, we got to listen to him, and then we will get, we will bring this in for, we will bring this in for a landing, but we have to, we have to maintain decorum. We must...
Remember, he told you to...
I, I, I know. Please, please, but please let us get through the process. Please, continue.
You've been told throughout this political season that you could get 100 there, maybe 50 there, 200 was one of the options, all kinds of options have been put in front of you. But if you look at what Christie's letter is from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, the only option that doesn't have the very clearly worded, you know, any clear possibility of getting done, is 26 spots without a bathroom. Now, before we build anything around here, we always go through the public forum portion, and when you do the public forum portion out in Perdido Key, and the citizens come and talk about what they're going to want, they, they're going to lose their minds if you don't have a bathroom. That's, that's an absolute requirement. So, we're back down to exactly what I said it was at the beginning, before all of the hyperbole that came up. We have the opportunity, and you said you wanted to bring it in for a landing, and certainly, I'm sure everybody's already made their decisions about where they're going to land, and that's fine. We have the opportunity to direct staff, and when we did the Restore Act, take a look at the Restore Act, we added acquisition in, and we added that blue-hatched area on that Restore Act request that says acquisition anywhere in that area of that built-up core that enables the day visitor to come and park once, play all day. That was the, that, you know, very critical part of that process. We have the opportunity to put enough money into that Restore project, using Restore money to buy, to acquire land, use this property as mitigation land, as is being recommended by Fish and Wildlife, so that we can build high density without the constraints of the HCP on that area in the core. That option is your Option B that you've included in the, on the item that you put on here. That option is the only one that moves us forward on the long-term plan to ensure access to the island for all going forward. The choice that you have today is where somebody's going to be making a motion here, I'll be making a motion for B, and we'll see what happens. The choice that you have is, do we go for a short-term solution now, or do we continue to move the ball forward on a long-term solution that makes sure that not only us, but our children and our grandchildren have access to Perdido Key, whether you live there or you live anywhere else in Escanbee County?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes. Commissioner Robinson, you're recognized.
Doug, there are many things in your comments that I agree with you. There is one that I have a slightly different perspective than where you are in this, and again, to me, it didn't matter if there was one parking place. I mean, we ultimately purchased that for public access, and for whatever, that is one of the things we put in that, that part. It doesn't matter to me that it's temporary or not. I've said to you, if you want to keep pursuing other opportunities, you and the board in the future can do that and do whatever's there. Until this board takes a different perspective, it takes a different vote that says that is not going to be public access, then is the board's direction that we continue to pursue public access. Now, I've been the very first one from this morning that said, I'm not advocating anything that is a significant build-out on there. I wouldn't even say you put a bathroom, you just figure out what you can do with a porta-potty or something else there. I mean, that, that, that's what you could do in the, in the interim while you're trying to figure out what you're doing. This board, whoever's on here, you're on here with other people, y'all can figure out what's going to be the long-term solution, and if Triumph or Restore, or however ends up creating the other larger access property where you can have a much more, you can always make that determination and move forward from there. But at this point, the only thing I disagree with you on a lot of things you said is, we have taken a formal position as a board, that that is for public access. It would be like what I would say, doing any of this, vacating, you are asking us to vacate waterfront property, which we have a policy that we don't vacate waterfront property. So, I mean, at this point, I don't see how I get around that or any other position. I'll be the first to say, I'm not saying intensely develop this and put it in there, but I think we've got to open it to the public. I mean, that's the, that's the purpose of what we did.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson, I need to speak to, Commissioner Robinson, you have always been an extraordinary advocate for Perdido Key.
Yes.
For a very long time, even when the commissioner from this district wasn't.
I fought, I fought the bingo when they were calling about the bingo. I fought that.
Yes, you did. When you came, and when I came into office, one of the things that you had struggled with for many years was the Me Too thing, okay, before the current hashtag Me Too. Every time that Pensacola Beach got something, Pensacola, Perdido Key had to get it. And it was always bizarre to us, to most of us that were out there. Who thinks like that? The islands being so radically different, that whatever's good for Pensacola Beach should be judged based on what's good for Pensacola Beach? What's good for Perdido Key should be judged for what's good on Perdido Key? You've never been disrespectful to Perdido Key, but to hear you sit and say that porta-potties is appropriate? That's a struggle for me, man. That is, then, and that is outside of the character of what you, of how you have been toward Perdido Key...
Okay, okay, please, please.
For some period of time. So, you know, porta-potties, the, let's get by with the least that we can at the time, let's go with some tiny little access, that type of mentality is precisely what has gotten us to the point where we have these tiny accesses that create conflicts. The commissioner from Perdido Key and the people of Perdido Key, the lion's share of Perdido and Greater, of Greater Perdido Key are saying that we need to stop doing these small accesses and get very serious about a large, long-term access. You know, I can see where you're at. I can respect that that is where you're at. I am very disappointed that that is where you're at on this.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. At this point, at this point, I'm just going to make a brief comment. I don't see Commissioner Barry's light on, but I just want to say, Doug, listen, a year ago, when you brought, brought the idea to purchase more property, I think, go back and watch the tape, I supported that. I support beach access as much as we can get, wherever we can get it, because there's so many folks that don't get to go to the beach. But at that point, you know, I'm somewhat embarrassed to say, I did not know about this property. This was brought to my attention after the fact. Had I known we're sitting on 330 feet of beach access, for whatever the reason, I mean, you know, I, that would have been, that would have been a good thing for me to know, and I would have began really pushing it, you know. Here, here's the critical thing. I've, I've had all kinds of conversations with Tim Day. I don't want to do anything that puts us out of balance with the Habitat Conservation Plan. I don't want to do anything that really radically puts us out of balance with the Perdido Key Master Plan. But here's the great news. It's not an either-or choice. It's not a Hobson's choice. You got to take any horse in the barn, but it has to be this one. We can do both. We can open this up to limited access. Thank you. I appreciate it. I believe that we can open it up to limited access, either 1A or 1B, although I prefer the 1B, because I think you get more spots, and it comes into about, you know, 7,800 per spot versus, you know, over 9,000 per spot in 1A. But either which way, I agree with Grover. You know, the board took, took a position, and anytime within the last five years, you know, I was on the school board at that time, but even after, since I got on this board, this board could have made a different decision, but they didn't. So, the decision that stands is the decision that stands, and, and, you know, I think the great thing to do here, Doug, let me just try something different. How about getting in front of this and saying, "Look, I can get it, I can get behind a light, low-intensity development, and then down the line, like Grover says, if, if, if other property becomes available or a funding source, you, you'll have support from this board. You'll have my support." I told you this morning at the review, and I wasn't making up a story, I've got pictures to prove it. I used to park out there when it was a Junior Food Store. Any of you remember those? And I used to, I used to go out there, and my dad and I used to go up and down that beach catching redfish, whiting, bull redfish during the, during the winter, sheep's head. I mean, I have a great, my, my dad passed away a few years ago, so this, this is a very important area of Pensacola for me. I grew up on those beaches, and, and I want other kids in our community to, to be able to go out there and have access. And you go out there now, and it's a, it's a concrete jungle, and there's ropes. You know, you mentioned beach access 1, it's depressing when you go out there. You know, you got, you got folks on either side with, with armed security saying you can't go. It wasn't like that when I grew up here in the 70s and 80s, it just wasn't like that. I could go up and down that beach wherever I wanted to to go fishing. Now, I get it, property rights, I get all that, but we own 330 feet on the Gulf. The folks from Crabtrap have been here talking to us, they, they want this. They have another 200 feet, 530 feet on the Gulf. Sure, we may not be able to have 50 or 80 spots, all right? We do the minimal amount that we can get away with without putting the Habitat Plan out of balance. It's not gonna cost us a whole lot of money, Doug. The smart, the smart play here is get in front of that. Get, jump in the train, get in the locomotive and be the conductor. Otherwise, you know, the train, I believe, is gonna leave the station, and we're gonna do what's right. We're gonna do what's right. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll take your free political advice for exactly what I paid for it. When I ran for office, I swore that I would back the Habitat Conservation Plan and the Perdido Key Master Plan.
But this does not, this does not-
It does. Mr. Chairman, you're not familiar enough with it to know-
Well, yes, I am, and I'm gonna bring Tim Day. Tim, walk up to the podium, please. Yeah, I'm tired of hearing that, because I'm asking him and he's saying it's not, and I'm hearing from you that it is. So, now we're gonna play truth or consequences, man. We're gonna separate fact from fiction, like the scene from The Thing, you know, we're gonna figure out who's, who's who. Is, does this minimal impact parking structure, plan, does that put us out of whack with Habitat Conservation Plan?
So, the development as discussed, .4 acres or less, should be something we should be able to get approved with consultation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. We still have a management plan we have to get through with them.
Okay.
But, you know, my understanding is, you know, although the service does prefer other options-
This isn't a deal killer if we do .4 acres.
In my opinion, it is not.
Okay, and you're the, you're the environmental guy, Doug. He's the, he's the expert that I've been talking to-
All right, Tim, let me ask the rest of the question then. It's 'cause you, Mr. Chairman, you wanna just ask the part of the question that gets you the answer that you want.
Sure.
What happens to the potential mitigation bank if we build out on this property? Do we have that property available for mitigation to get the maximum density out of another parcel later?
If, if we were to develop it, we would lose those mitigations.
You would lose those mitigations. So, the, the possibility of a large, high-density area becomes substantially diminished without a mitigation bank, because you are tied to the HCP on that parcel as well?
It, it would provide some challenges, depending on the site that was located for the large site. The Balancing Act out on, on the key with the Habitat Conservation Plan is, there's, over the life of the, the permit, we have 66 acres that we can authorize development with.
Sure.
The advantage on utilizing a mitigation portion from this site is that we could redevelop or, or develop an area somewhere else on the island without any deduction of that 66 acres. So, we would not, as, as we improve public access, we wouldn't have an opportunity to potentially reduce development on the private side on other parcels.
Is it, is it a one-for-one, so is if we took .4 acres, would it be .4 acres from the 66?
It's, it would be a straight transfer, so it'd be, we would just take a development footprint and move it, and we'd be able to move it without the need of a permit, so it wouldn't impact that 66 acres.
Okay, so that, that's what I need to hear.
And just for scale, on a 100-foot lot, .4 acres is essentially full build-out of that 100-foot lot. So, if that, if that helps for the discussion.
Grover, did you wanna weigh in?
I, I wanna ask a question in the, the mitigation, and again, I get what's going on, and I get the need for mitigation, and I have absolutely, as Commissioner Underhill, while he's been on this board, have supported the, him to go forward with the initiative to do a master plan and then execute that master plan. I'm still, I, I don't see any inconsistency yet in how this all works out. But in doing that, there's gonna be a lot of leftover acreage at, on Perdido Key that's gotta, that's gonna have to be put into this, this thing, correct? And if somebody is going to build a large area, a large development, they can simply buy other vacant pieces and, and pull them together and say, "This is going to be habitat" and allow them to, the developer to bring the additional area that would be habitat to the table, that would be a part of the development. They could easily do that, correct?
The, the slight difference, and, and you would typically do that with wetland mitigation. The, the challenge on the key is for the entire build-out of the key, we're limited to 66 acres.
Tim, I, I get that, I get that. So, that means there're gonna be other acres that you can't build on.
Yes, sir.
That are habitat. There, there, this isn't the only habitat on the entire island. There are, there are other places on the island that you could, you could easily, that are vacant, that could be purchased, and could be habitat, correct?
There is. I, the, the, the .4 acres really is the existing asphalt that's on the site. So, the mitigation would be removing that asphalt and restoring it to habitat, rather than the, the land value just being set aside. So, we have something that has an ability to be developed, and, and we're, you know, permanently removing that, so-
But, but what's being portrayed here is somehow that we're going to lose some kind of benefit that while, yes, I, I agree in public in nature we would like that, but that's ultimately gonna be private in, in ownership. I mean, i- if, if, if the individual who's building the private ownership, they are welcome to go acquire more property and help us with our mitigation. I mean, that's what happens with wetlands mitigation all the time. Correct?
Yeah, as an apples-to-apples comparison, that extra land purchased would have to have existing concrete slabs that could be removed and restored to habitat.
Well, what are we gonna do with the ones that have, that are just dune habitat?
It's, those are, the development on those are, is what part of the 66 acres is. So, if, if you have existing dune habitat, that footprint-
But at some point, after you build your 66 acres, you're still gonna have dune out, you're, you're gonna still have vacant parcels on Perdido Key that now have no ability to get developed, correct?
It's, well, my, my goal is to make sure that we, that I stretch that 66-
All of us, all of our goal is to make sure that's minimized, but very likely that could end up happening. My point is, the private person who developed it could go buy any number of properties and bring them in and say, "He's gonna, he's gonna contribute those into, into, into-
Conservation.
-habitat, conservation."
They could do that.
But it's, we're, unlike wetland mitigation, on Perdido Key, we don't have a, if you, if you purchase a lot and, you know, if, if you set aside two lots to develop one, we're not, we're not set up in that fashion. When we went through that process, you know, land values on the key were a half million an acre interior, and it just, that wasn't a viable model, but it's just slightly different, but-
So, I wanted to ask a question, and Doug, I just wanna say, I have supported you on many things. You wanted to do that, you wanted to deal with changes on the road. We can go all the way back to the bingo hall, but, but at the end of the day, I'm not asking anything to happen on Perdido Key that I haven't looked at and we've dealt with as well. We have places where we have porta potties at Pensacola Beach at different crossovers, because we don't have, we don't have the ability to build a restroom. And I'm not saying if we found the right place, I wouldn't want to find if I was on this board for you to have a restroom. But at this point right now, if an individual wants to go use the beach and they don't wanna use the restroom, they can easily do that and not go use the restroom, if that's the problem with it, because they don't like the portal. But if I don't ever give them the openness to be there, they can't ever, they have no option to use the beach, regardless of what happens with a porta potty. So, at this point, the, the option should be for the individual who wants to use the beach, and if they don't like the porta potty, they can drive and go somewhere else. I, I would like to give them a better option, but I'm trying to still give you the opportunity to find other places that you may want to do something in the long term. I still think, what is it, D, or, yeah, the, the long-term locations and bring back to the board? I think the board has all the freedom to do that, that they want to do that, and you have all the, the ability still to pursue whatever the plan is you want to do. I think you make this a light development and then, and then go forward from there.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Barry, then I'll come back to you, Commissioner Under, Commissioner Barry.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the decision that we have tonight, I mean, it doesn't, excuse me, from the conversation this morning, I mean, we're not necessarily choosing option A or B if we, if we're just wanting to move forward with it. Are we having to define which option? I thought we were just gonna put-
We're gonna put 50 grand.
...50,000 in the planning.
Yep, that's correct.
And then bring us the best-
Those were simple concept drawings that-
Okay.
-were just kind of approaching what it could look like out there.
So, they're, but they're not pertinent to what, to what the board needs to do tonight as far as, you know, I don't have to select between these two if I, if I want to move forward with access.
That's correct.
And, you know, the comments from the, from the lady at Fish and Wildlife, you know, I did read the letter, and, you know, there's a, there's some of the tone that takes the tone that you described, and, and some advice, and, and the gentleman that spoke from the Defenders of Wildlife, I mean, he seems very reasonable and certainly seems very well-equipped to, as an expert in that, in that field and that industry. However, we have the, I mean, we have the public money that's in the, that's in the property now. You know, I think each of us have decisions, I mean, I could elaborate on mine, but, you know, each of us have issues in our districts, I believe, where we have public money that's on the ground, and it might not be ideal. You know, I've inherited, won't name the specific areas, but I've inherited a few that have a lot of public money on the ground, and that's not what, that's not what I would do if I was starting from scratch. But the fact is that, that I've gotta, you know, realistically, I've gotta make the best of what is there. That public money, that public money's already been spent. You know, if the, whether it was the Defenders of Wildlife or the person with Fish and Wildlife, I mean, if a part of the letter said, "Well, in addition to encouraging this," or, you know, "It's my opinion that you should do this," I mean, if they're offering something, if they're, you know, if they're gonna come and say, "Well, we, you know, we feel so strongly about this issue that we will, you know, we will procure additional beach frontage or foot frontage for you on the key if you'll do this," well, that's, that would be valuable hypothetically to me. But just the advice after, you know, after I voted, you know, after I voted with my colleagues to spend the money there, and then to just have the advice, "Well, that's not, not really what you should do," well, I mean, that, that doesn't bring, in my opinion, that doesn't bring a lot of value to the conversation unless they're gonna say, "Well, we feel so strongly that we are going to, we, we want to partner with you. This is, we feel strongly this is not the best use here. We will help you procure 300 feet somewhere else." Any agency, I'm not sure the Defenders of Wildlife, but Fish and Wildlife has all the money, they have all the money they could possibly spend. So, if they felt that strongly, then I feel like they would say, "Well, you know, this is, this is what we would advise that you would do." I, you know, I don't see that, I don't see that in the tone, and I'm not gonna make a decision when I've got that kind of public, when I've supported that kind of public money on the ground, I'm not gonna make a decision to not do something out of the fear of what would, of what would happen. You know, we have the money set aside in the, in the beach acquisition or Perdido Key property acquisition project already to, to fund the 50,000, and that's all that's gonna do is, is begin the process, and some of these other details about whether it's option A, B, or yet to be discussed, C, D, E, whatever, then that stuff's gonna come back to us. So, Mr. Chairman, I mean, that, that's what I would be supportive of. I, I feel like that's, if that's the extent of what we need to do tonight, then I would move that, we would, you know-
Mr. Stephen, before you-
Sure.
I, I recognize that I, I wish to make a motion, I was hoping that we would get through the comments, I'd be able to make a motion.
Sure.
I recognize that it will probably not pass, but I do feel that I, you know, out of respect for the people that have done the master plan and the HCP, I would like to make a motion that is in keeping with, and certainly would have been the motion that would have been made had we actually been able to acquire either of the two, you know, that we, that we had snatched out from underneath us. I recognize it may even die for lack of a second, and so if that be the fact, so be it, but I want to articulate, I move that we move item 6B, that we identify as a funding source for this project, item, on, under, item C, $10 million over the period of two to three years from the Restore, to added to the existing Restore project, to provide for a large public access area in the core of Perdido Key in keeping with the HCP and the Perdido Key Master Plan. And D, of course, directing staff to evaluate those additional parcels that would be able to achieve that. That concludes my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Thank you for the time to do that, Stephen.
Sure.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
And one additional comment on the, the letter from, a letter from Fish and Wildlife, you know, where she refers to that there was, it was originally just a Habitat Conservation Project, but then the public access was added later. I don't, I mean, I, if she says that, I'm sure that's true. It wasn't added after our board motion, though. I mean, it, by the time, by the time the discussion came to us, that was a very clear and prevalent part of the conversation. It may not have been in months previous, I, you know, I, I can't say that I know that. If she says it wasn't, then it probably wasn't. But by the time the discussion came to our board, it was clearly stated and, you know, presented that it was going to be this and it was gonna be this. But, Mr. Chairman, in light of, in light of the non-second on the other motion, I would move that we direct staff to, to begin to procure the planning, the planning aspect moving forward, and utilize the funds that are in the Perdido Key beach acquisition project currently of $50,000.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll make a second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I, I, I have further discussion in the sense that I'm leaving in my only advice for the board. I, I would still have no problem, Commissioner Underhill, with what you said in identifying other funding that, that might become available, and also ask staff to continue to evaluate other locations for a, for a more long-term solution to public access. I, I would never have had any problem with that, and I, I would, if I was on this board, I would still support you in, in that endeavor as you move forward.